...were among the 25 lowest performing schools in the state. We also have the dubious distinction of having the absolute lowest ranked school in the entire state, right here in St. Petersburg, Melrose Elementary. I think if we were asked to give a grade to the current school board in the state of our Pinellas County schools, many of us would give them a D. This new school board has quite a daunting task ahead of them. We have a very diverse group of candidates this year.
One, two, three.
Soccer engineers, politicians, professors, many different skills. We have people who have currently children in the school system, candidates who have never had a child in the school system, candidates who children chose to go to private schools.
Live event coverage from radiosaintpete.com. From the Orange Blossom banquet facility in downtown St. Petersburg, the Sun Coast Tiger Bay Club luncheon. Today's speakers will be candidates for the Pinellas County School Board. Let's go to the podium.
This school board faces a number of crucial questions. Do we need more magnets? Do we need more fundamentals? How do we fund these programs? Should we take those funds and focus on increasing the quality of schools across the board? How would we do that? Should the school system have their own police force or should it be handed over to the sheriff's office? Common Core? No Common Core? How do we implement it? How do we test it? How do we hold the teachers accountable? How do we increase the quality of students we're producing? The list is endless. I've heard many people say, "Well, I don't have a child in the school system, so why should I care who's on the school board?" Well, they're wrong. Everyone should care. First of all, we're all taxpayers. They are spending our money. But more importantly, the future of our county is in their hands. I'll give you an example. I was part of a group recently that was chosen to try to woo a high-tech company into relocating their headquarters to St. Petersburg. The reason they chose not to come to St. Petersburg is the school system. They felt that our school system was not producing the quality students that they needed. They didn't want their employees to have to put their students in our schools. And even more damningly, they said they felt, "Well, we were not producing a highly skilled workforce that they needed for their company." Are our schools producing the kind of workforce we need? Are they giving our students the skills and education they need to be productive members of society? The people here before you will be the ones making the decisions and implementing the policies to make sure our children have the skills they need to succeed. You have the power to make that decision. You will make that choice. Please choose wisely.
Each candidate will get two minutes for opening remarks, one minute for closing remarks, and 45 seconds to respond to the question. You can direct your questions. I'm running a little early, so try to remember this. You can direct your questions to one or all the candidates who has then 45 seconds to respond. And I will pick the questioners. We're going to get started at about 12:35, so enjoy your lunch in the meantime. That's what it says. 12:35.
No break.
No break?
No break.
I guess we're getting started now. I've been gonged. Did we decide who's going to go first? You want me to start at one end or the other? I'll start at...
You can come here.
It is really nice to be back in the bin with so many of you whom I know. And I understand that we only have two minutes, and I couldn't possibly frame for you all of the positive things that are going on within Pinellas County schools, as well as some of the challenges that we have before us. During the introduction, I wasn't quite sure if I even wanted to get up and say anything because it sounded like the sky was falling as it relates to our children in Pinellas County, but I'm here to tell you that the sky is not falling. Nor does it matter that I've been on the board for a year, eight months, and seven days. I am still an integral part of a larger portion of the pie. I don't think I have to go ahead and give you the historical perspective of who I am or the things that I've been involved in, but I do want to share with you just a few things that we've been able to do to make sure that we're moving the needle as it relates to our children and education. I've been a part of a number of groups and activities. We have had more than ever an increase in the CTAE programs where our children can get certifications, as well as a high school diploma, so that when they are graduating from our schools, they are very much so graduating job-ready. We had a number of corporations and small businesses and startups coming out of the community because our students are graduating with a high school diploma and a certification in areas that range from construction trades all the way to Microsoft DOS, Excel, culinary arts, and other areas. I'm here to share with you today that, and my kids in Pinellas, we have Ambassador Lord and the woman who serves on the board, I'm a previous board member, has a 44 gender-specific male pool that is proud of itself after pace to deal with some of the issues and concerns that you've heard talked about earlier. I'm here to tell you that the needle is moving because we increased our graduation rate. Do we still have an achievement gap? Yes we do. Can we solve it overnight? No, we don't. But go to your legislature and tell them to stop moving the bar every time our children meet and exceed the bar that they've already climbed.
Better if we chime up here because this is on the radio. Renee's got that window that just projects, so he was able to get it, but I want to make sure everybody else gets it up here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Irene Olive Cates, and I am a candidate for District 7. I would like to say my understanding of education closely reflects the things that our children are facing in today. Well, as we had a speaker come up and say, we do have failing schools in St. Petersburg. And guess what? That failing school, Melrose Elementary, is directly in my district. We have five failing schools in my district, as well as over 10 schools of children entering the 4th grade, not yet reading on a 3rd grade level. As my candidate has stated before, the Summer Bridge program has passed over 400 students to 4th grade. Yet, you can pass them to the 4th grade, but if they're not reading on a 3rd grade level when entering, guess what happens when they get to the 5th grade? They still can't read. We have to have a more hands-on, innovative, creative approach to reaching our children. This is the new technological age that we're in, and it has to be more engagement of our children. And my objectives closely reflect that understanding of education. I feel as though we need to have more parent engagement. We have to focus on family literacy, not just the literacy of the child, yet the literacy of the family as a whole. Because, as we know, education begins and ends at the home. So, I am candidate for District 7, Irene Olive Cates. Please visit my website, votecates.com, for more information on my platform. And on November 4th, please write my name on the ballot as I'm a write-in candidate for change, positive change for our students. Irene Olive Cates, thank you.
Let me tell you, it's easier to be out there than up here. But being a Tiger board member, well, a board member now, but I have been a member of Tiger Bay longer than I've been on the school board, I think 34 years. My opponent implied that somehow, after someone has served as long as I have, you lose your sparkle. I don't think someone who lost their sparkle would be doing so well on the school board and occasionally winning a Tiger. I also want to thank Tiger Bay. I learned here, before I ever ran for elected office, that part of being a good elected official is being to know how to ask a very focused, precise question. And I think I'm actually known for that. I'm proud to be an educator. However, my opponent claims you need all skills on the school board. I founded Resource Center for Women shortly after I moved from New York City in 1977. I worked at that agency, and that agency served women for over 30 years. I even was a, my view, columnist, like I think Tom Dunn was also, for two years. I wrote about 15 columns. It was unpaid. However, it was really, really good experience. I am proud of my service on the school board. I don't think we need a new voice. My voice is okay. I think I have the same voice, except I'm more knowledgeable and more experienced, and I've kept up my lifelong commitment to not only public service, but community service. Thanks for having us.
Maureen Ahern, running for Pinellas County School Board, District 6. I want to thank the Tiger Bay Club for having this event today and having us all here. My mother is back there, and I want to thank her for coming. She was my first teacher. I grew up in this community, raised my family here, have worshipped in the same church for 40 years, worked as a local journalist for 20 years, worked as a substitute teacher, own a small business, and serve on many community and civic boards. I am married and have three grown daughters. I am running for this seat because I want to bring that public service to an elected position on our school board. We have some excellent schools, great teachers, and incredible students, but I want all of our students to experience this. Too many of them are struggling with about half of Pinellas 3rd graders failing in math and reading. Half. I don't see a sense of urgency with this alarming report, and we keep hearing it's just going to take more time before things get better. Yet, our children don't have time, do they? They only have one chance at their childhood education. If elected, I would continue Superintendent Mike Grego's plans to improve these startling reports. I ask why it has taken so long to have a strategic plan? My opponent has been on the school board for 24 years, yet this plan just came into effect a year ago. Where has this strategic plan been? We need an all-hands-on-deck approach to solve this problem of these low scores and struggling schools. I would invite district officials, parents, and business and church leaders. Too many of their parents, too many parents feel their voice is not being heard. As an example, the school board decided not to expand any more fundamental schools when there is a huge demand for it, a huge waiting list for that. We need to have the students master the fundamentals. If they're not learning to read, write, and do math, how can they go on further to excel in their academic career? And lastly, too many of our hard-working teachers have been robbed of their profession or are now facilitators rather than educators. I would thoroughly look through the, whatever you want to call it, Common Core Florida standards. We need to take a step back and look at that. Thank you.
I'm going to take this out, if you don't mind. Again, I'm Kent Paluso, District 4. Happy to be here today. You know, I've been in this, in Pinellas, for over 28 years, and I've served on many local boards and committees, both elected and non-elected, and oversaw several multimillion-dollar budgets. You can check out my website, votekentpaluso.com. What I'm most passionate about, though, and why I'm here today, is because, what I'm most passionate about is my work in education. It began in the 1980s, served in several capacities over the years. I was appointed by the governor in 2007 to chair the Early Learning Coalition of Pinellas, served on the Early Learning Advisory Council statewide, school board of Calvary Christian High School. I believe our school board needs a diverse membership, truly representative of our community. I think we need not only successful educational leaders, but also people that have run businesses and had families and have been truly rooted in the community. I feel I meet those criteria. I look forward to being carved up by you guys today. That sounds strange, but that's what my cup says right in front of me. Carve up a politician today. I look forward to answering your questions today. And again, I'm Kent Paluso, District 4. Thank you.
Another reason to go on a diet, I guess. Name's John Nygren, candidate for the school board in District 4. I have five children and 15 grandchildren. I have more than 35 years of teaching experience of secondary math. I've served four years on a public school committee in Massachusetts. I've worked in industry as a numerical control programmer, also owned a convenience store, real estate business, and for one of my part-time jobs with five kids, I worked 10 years part-time for UPS. Why am I running? I want to increase the vocational technical high schools in Pinellas County. Not every child is going to college. I want to initiate ideas to improve our elementary schools. I'm going to stop right there for one second. I'm going to change a little, change the little thing up here. It was mentioned earlier about the low-level schools in St. Petersburg. They're throughout the county. It just isn't St. Petersburg. On August 18th, first day of school, I'd like you to think of if you went to an elementary school and you parked across the street, and you watched these kids going in, the little innocent five- and six-year-olds, and realize that one out of three of them will not graduate from high school. They deserve better than that. I want to create more alternative schools. Students should not be allowed to disrupt the education of other kids. How do I know that? I've worked at both P-Tech South, when it was the discipline school on 34th Street, and also Bayside High School on 49th Street. I want to put the special needs aides back in the class. How do I know that? Teaching, I went to a, I trained a class for two days in Palm Harbor Middle School. For four of the six periods, there was a teacher's aide in that class. That class would not have been successful without that aide. We need those people back. I want to make nurses and psychologists full-time in all schools. It's pretty tough when a kid has to get, only can get sick when the nurse is there. Again, John Nygren, District 4. Thank you very much.
I'm Beverly Beliris. I'm running also for District 4. Little bit about my background. I am an educator, have been for 14 years, but I've also been a businessperson. We talked about ours, too many schoolteachers on the board, need more businessmen on the board. I come with all those qualities. I have 20, no, I'm sorry, I'm aging myself, almost 40 years of business background. I was also the mayor of the city, Tarpon Springs. I served my community for 12 years. So, I'm used to lobbying, getting, when we talk about mandates of the Common Core, I can go to Tallahassee. I'm used to going to Tallahassee and Washington and talking to the people that need to make the changes that we need to make in our schools. I am seeing firsthand, when I left public office, I went back into education. I taught the last four years. I just retired. I'm seeing the frustrations of the teachers, the parents, and the students of the over-testing the Common Core. I taught it this year. I'm the only candidate that has actually taught the Common Core. Let me tell you, we need a strong voice about the Common Core. Do we need standards? Yes, we've always had standards. But we need to start paying attention to what we're doing to our students. I am tired of teaching in front of students that get sick when they have to take a test, passing out, taking a test. We're grading too, we're holding them to too many grades. You need to give the autonomy back to the teachers. Allow us to teach. You talk about failing schools and teachers getting blamed for a failing school? It's not the teachers, it's the mandate. I have to teach what they tell me to teach, how long, what to teach, what page to be on, and how to say it. That's not teaching to me. We need to make some strong changes, and I can be that voice to make those changes. Please remember me, and I know most of you are not in my district, and no, by the way, I don't have any children, but I have adorable poodle. Everybody's bringing out their grandchildren. I had to say something. But please remember to vote on August 26th. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having this event. This is actually the best well-attended school board event that I've been at in this race, so kudos to all you guys for coming out. My name is Kent Curtis. I am a parent, I'm an educator, and I'm an active volunteer in the Pinellas County school system. For the last 20 years, I have been training teachers and educating students in innovative classroom techniques, hands-on, applied, experiential education, proven techniques for teaching children. For the last eight years, I've been a Pinellas County school parent with my two children, who are at the back table back there, both middle-schoolers now, attending the public schools here in St. Petersburg, on the south side of St. Petersburg, since kindergarten. What I see in the schools concerns me. And it concerns me not just because I have two kids in the schools. This isn't because I have skin in the game. It concerns me because I'm a member of this community, and I know as well as you do that our communities are remade each and every day in our public schools. If we want to live up to the great promise of this country where every child has an opportunity to compete, if we want to fulfill the promise of merit, have a strong democracy, strong healthy economies, and strong harmonious neighborhoods, we've got to succeed with our public schools. We've got to succeed in ensuring that every child, every child, whether boy or girl, high-income, low-income, or in the middle, receives an appropriate and a quality education and is educated, not just tested. With that in mind, I will work to enhance policies that provide career training, technical training, and apprenticeship training for our non-college-bound high school seniors. I will work to create policies that enhance and celebrate teachers and teaching, so our teachers can teach our kids, not just test them. And I'll work to create policies to engage our parents as active and engaged participants in the education of their children. My name is Kent Curtis. I'm running for Pinellas County School Board because I believe we can do better. Better for our kids, better for our parents, better for our teachers, and better for our community. Thank you very much.
It's great to be back here. I'm also a parent of actually four children, but one's still presently in school, along with my 34-year-old. And they've all been at different schools. My son, Dan, graduated from St. Pete High. My daughter graduated from Bogasiega High. And my last two are finishing up at Osceola High. They were all in, well, they went to Westgate, where I was principal for 17 years for elementary school. My son, Dan, went to Starkey, where I was assistant principal. And they went to regular middle school. I'm very pleased at the education that they have received, but we all know it's that partnership of parents and teachers. I'm very passionate about education, of course. I've spent 35 years in it as an elementary teacher, middle-school teacher, and my last 17 years, I was principal of Westgate Elementary School. When I started at Westgate Elementary, we had half of Jordan Park when it was really Jordan Park. And we knew we had to go to the community to reach our students and families and not wait for our parents to come to us, and we did that. And we built great trust and great relationships, and I felt we were a very successful school, even being one out of 10 schools in the state as a model in math, science, and technology. And this is years ago. I know we can do the same thing. Granted, Melrose did not do well, but this is the first year that our area superintendents have actually been empowered to work with their principals and staffs to see what the needs are. I know at Melrose, they were given a lower teacher-pupil ratio for 4th and 5th grade. They were given an additional hall monitor, and it takes time, and I'm out of time. But I'm Terri Krasner and running countywide, District 2. Thank you.
Thank you for having us out here. I'm really pleased to see as many people as we have, and we really do have a great and diverse slate of candidates for school board. And it's important that we understand what each candidate is standing for and what we want to do going forward, not just as voters, but as a community, and make our schools good. I'm Chris Talknitz. I'm running for school board because I believe we can make a difference. Our schools are good, but we need great schools. And in order to have great schools, we need great, exceptional people on the school board. It doesn't matter whether you're an educator or whether you're a business owner. It matters about vision. I have a vision, and I want to bring parents back into the classroom. We have, in the past 50 years, pushed parents out of the classroom, whether it was through forced busing, or redistricting, or just in general, the confusion that we bring into the schools, whether it's a 504, IEP, all these acronyms and everything that goes on. We need to reach out to the parents. I want the parents back into the classroom. That's one of my main objectives, is to get them back in. How we're going to do it is going to depend on the principals and the teachers and the leaders of the individual schools, because we now have what we call close-to-home schools. The school is a microcosm of the community it serves. We need people leading those schools that are able to go out, engage the community, engage the parents, and bring them back in. I'm Chris Talknitz. I'm running for school board. I have a passion for education. My literature is on your chair. If you have any questions after it, please let me know. Thank you, and have a good day.
I have the dubious task of calling on the questions, questioners. So, who would like to go first?
Well, we have to direct your question at one candidate, or all of the candidates. And I'm just going to ask the candidate to stand at her feet so it's back, and they can just pass the mic. We'll see, we only have two mics, so we'll see if the audience can be loud enough, but we don't need to have two mics. So, you either can share this one, and then you can share that one, and just lighten it up.
Barclay.
I have a pretty good voice. My name's Barclay Harless, and I've heard a lot about school scores. I'd like to ask a question about credit scores. A lot of kids come out of high school with almost no financial knowledge, and it hurts them in the real world. What would you do on the school board to help financial literacy for students?
Directed at everybody?
Yes, all of them.
And we'll start, how about, this question, for all, start at this end, and then at the time you start. And...
Well, Barclay, thank you so much, and congratulations on your new position at C1 Bank. I am proud to just share that at Northeast High School, we have the financial component there. Most of our high schools have magnet detractors, and I had the dubious pleasure of attending their graduation ceremony. And at that high school, they have various banks and corporations, small businesses and large businesses, that come out to partner with those students, tutor them, and work with them on not only financial literacy, but working in that venue once they graduate from high school. Don't forget, we still have the Gustavos Center with Academic Village and those other components that students can go in, and I know they're still doing it the way that my children did. They show them how to write checks, why it's important to balance, and things of that nature.
Financial literacy is... Okay, I must be about to say something really good. Okay, financial literacy is very important. This is something we have to teach every child in every school on a day-to-day basis, something that should be added into the curriculum as it pertains to the everyday education of our student. We have to teach our students the here and the now, what they would need to prepare for after high school life. And a financial, the financial beginning does not just start after high school, it starts while you're in elementary school. So, we definitely need... So we definitely need more programs in the school system to teach our children how to balance a checkbook, and that's my time.
We have a wonderful partnership with the Education Foundation, and we have at the Stavros Center Finance Park. And there is about, I think, a three or four-week curriculum in middle school related to financial literacy. We also are starting something called Future Plans, which also is with the Education Foundation, where all high school students will be looking at their future career and education plans. And I believe that financial literacy certainly will be part of that.
Okay, um, financial literacy, yes. Students should have that, but if they're not learning basic math, 50%, again, I keep going over that 50% number, are not selling at math, and that they're in grade. However, we expect them to continue to advance in their math. So I would include it in the curriculum, the, the basics of how do you balance a checkbook, you know, how do you save money, until the same, like, a lot of kids don't know how to save money these days. So again, including it in the curriculum, and making sure that these young students are mastering the fundamentals of math, because without that, there is no financial literacy.
Sad but true, a lot of the kids are not learning this. And we're really glad you brought that up, because credit score means far more than balancing a checkbook. We should be teaching those life skills. Every school or student, every child should get that in class, not have to go to Stavros Center, which is a wonderful facility, wonderful program. It should be taught in school, they should be taught why it is important to learn those skills, how to structure their own path out of your life at a day-to-day practical level. And we should be teaching financial responsibility. That's a good question.
As mentioned earlier, with this at Northeast High School, Mrs. Krasner did this sheep today. I only see that one school, that's your middle school. And at one time, used to have a course called Financial Algebra, that was for a higher-end student, paying a lot for every student. And finances in the country today, we need it more than anything.
Thank you. I teach in the grade, or talk to the grade, and we do Enterprise Village, and it's not a trick, Stavros Center only. For six weeks, the children, the children are, for six weeks, they are taught not just the balance of checkbook, but the responsibility of making wise choices. I think the school system is doing a really good job, mostly when, because we talk about it at elementary. They're taught how to save, how to, how to use a debit card, because when they go to Stavros Center, it's not about writing checks anymore, it's about using a debit card, which kept up, and I taught it years ago, where there was no debit card. So they are, at an early age, introducing the students to that concept. And they are getting it, and they love it, and it's a great, great program. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm not gonna use that. Kent Curtis, so I just did the, the Enterprise Village with my son, and I saw the six-week program. We've got some excellent education in our schools, Barclay, and, and we are working with our kids to do this. The schools can't do everything. We, we need more parent involvement, because if it's modeled at home, the kids are gonna learn it, and they're gonna do it. My son saved enough money from his allowance to be able to buy himself a Playstation a couple of years ago. If you model it at home, kids learn how to, how to manage money. So getting parents more involved and understanding the importance. And then I would add that perhaps institutions like C-1 Bank could send more volunteers to mentoring to some of our schools.
One thing about being at the end of a question, it's pretty well been answered. They really didn't miss much. But I know with having a son that just graduated from high school, as far as building credit, he had a debit card, but he didn't have a credit card. I know that some of our high schools are really starting these monthly meetings with their students, and they start at ninth grade, and then they go through, and they hit social skills, and they're hitting some of the areas of finance, or get, you know, what they need for college, for life, just a variety of, of topics. And it's, needs to be spread throughout every school, but we, we are moving forward.
All right, so I get the T in the last name, and I'm always last. I told my kid that. Get used to it. This is an opportunity for bringing parents back into the schools and having them participate. We could sit down and have an open house, or a curriculum night, or a finance night. Bring the kids and bring the parents in. Do something with the kids, do something with the parents. We can get the community back engaged, because it starts, like Mr. Curtis said, at home. We need to make sure that what we teach in school is reinforced at home. Thank you.
Before I select the next question, I just want to say that Peggy O'Shea was scheduled to be here, and, can they hear me? Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Having been a teacher, I should be able to project better. Peggy O'Shea was scheduled to be here. Unfortunately, her doctor advised her not to attend and be in large crowds, and you all saw the public announcement, so that's why she's not here. Peter.
Should I do this a cappella? Yes. I'm Peter Golenbach. This is for Maureen Ehern. You said you wanted to bring religious leaders into the schools. I'm curious, which religious leaders, and what would you have them tell the kids?
You misunderstood me. I didn't say bring religious leaders into the school. I said include them in the solving of why are some of our struggling schools are doing so poorly. So I would not bring them into the school, but they do need to be a voice as far as, you know, how we can get parents to be more involved in their child's education, business leaders, church leaders, elected officials. But no, not bringing them actually into the classroom.
Yell Ray.
My name is Ray Derrick, and I want to know who the genius was that came up with that idea that we should be teaching cursive writing and reading. I know you put it back, it's a mistake, a world that did not know that to begin with.
Who is that going to?
Any incumbent.
Any incumbent. Okay.
Common Core was put together by initially the Governors Association, Democrats and Republicans, mainly Republican governors. We were in a coalition with, I think, about 38 states. Governor Scott and the legislature said, no, we're gonna go out of that coalition and spend big bucks for Florida to have Florida standards. It's Common Core. They are standards. The only difference is, cursive writing has been added, and there is a stronger financial literacy component, even though it's still required in the schools. That wasn't school board, that was the Governors Association and the states.
This is for anybody who could quick answer, I'm Jane Stern. And we've all talked about who's parents are involved. We know that's the secret to success in any school. He's wanting to give you one idea of how you're going to create a successful involvement.
Which one?
All of it.
We'll start at this end, so you're not last.
Oh, so not last is that? I lied to my son. Sorry about that. Um, one of the things we can do is we can go to the city and say, you own some of this too, and ask for funding and create what I call curriculum nights. Bring the parents, bring the teachers in, make the school open and welcoming. That's something that the city and the school board can both work on.
Coming from a school that had a lot of struggling students, as much as we wanted our parents in, they still didn't come. We would ask, you know, we always had food, we always tried to find out what they really wanted to have in the way of discussions. And what we ended up really doing is trying to make independent learners from kindergarten on. We would send books homes with our children, but before they went home, we would show them how to use it. What, we're, we're doing laptops that are going home with all of our Title I students in third, fourth, and fifth grade, but we're making sure they understand the programs and can do it independently, whether there's a parent there or not. Of course, we want our parents involved, but it's not a given.
So the greatest challenge for the school system in 45 seconds, it's not really easy, but I do have a plan. We have a number of schools where we have a very low parent involvement, because they are low-income schools. This is traditional across the country. It's a real challenge. In our five failing schools on the south side, we have concentrated not only poverty, but also our African-American community, where we have a long history of not having the school system deliver. My plan is to have a series of community parent summits around the school, bring in the community, bring in the city, bring in the county, and open the dialogue with those parents. Parents want to help out their kids, they don't know how to plug into the school. If we open a dialogue, we can begin to explain how we can do it. Three touches a week from a parent, looking in at the portal and saying, do your homework, Johnny. It's enough to turn those schools around.
I'm gonna try this one. Um, I taught in Tarpon Springs, it's a Title I school, and you're right, Terri, you can't get them to come. We, we do everything we can possibly do to get those parents there. However, in Tarpon Springs, we started the city, and I'm a former mayor, we started, I knew a brother in Tarpon Springs, it's called Peace for Tarpon. It's an organization built of business leaders, school board, as well as teachers and the principal. We go out into the neighborhoods, we reach out, and that's the only way you're gonna do it. You need to get out in the neighborhoods. I visited a parent, five children, all under the age of six, and one in our school system. And she needed help how to manage all these kids and help with homework, and we gave her those tools to do that. So you can't go out and, out into the neighborhood.
I'm gonna echo, I believe, some comments, when I'm working at P-Tech South, I mean, I have a social worker who draws us to club and meet the parents, because the parents just would not come. If they don't come to you, then we go to them. They are looking for some help, okay? They really are. And I also say at P-Tech on the B-side, 99% of those kids, although they have been in trouble, you know, with drugs or alcohol or causing problems, 99% of those kids are really good kids.
Creative community partnerships, it can be done, I'll tell you how I did it. Cal, I go to Calvary Baptist Church, down the street from the Melo Booth and Drew, it's everywhere. Right down the street is a school called the Eisenhower Elementary. Low socioeconomic neighborhood, primarily Hispanic, primarily Mexican. A group of us from church, and started after just literally four or five of us, established a relationship with Eisenhower Elementary. We brought people from the church in, we graduated, that was the start. That was a way to start to engage the community, to get the parents engaging their kids in school. We finally had a picnic at a local park, large facility, we had 600, 700 people there. It works, it can be done, it just takes some innovation and creativity.
There's a program in New York City called the Harlem's Children's Initiative. It took children from very low-income minority neighborhoods. And with that holistic approach, reaching those moms, mainly single moms, from when their children were very young, and including them in this, in this process of raising our children, having more opportunities for preschool for them, having opportunities on the school grounds for them to get their hearing, their eyes set checked, it was a very holistic approach. And I think we almost need to kind of go toward that in some of these neighborhoods where the parents just feel at a loss as to how they can help their child. And again, including more fundamental schools.
We do have a program with, I helped from funding with Jake Juvenile Welfare Board, related to the Harlem Project, and we have that at Fairmount Park Elementary. Dr. Grego, there was an assembly of all administrators a few days ago, and Dr. Grego shared how his parents, he knew education was very important. But his father worked three jobs, his mother and baby didn't have a way to get to school, but he knew education was important. I think home visits are good, but a phone call is something we can do. For parents who are not able, or just don't seem to come to the school activities, we need to reach out, and some schools do it, and encourage them, you can make the importance of education right at home, even if you don't come to some of the activities.
I plan to increase parent engagement by implementing a program to let the parents understand the severity of being a producer and not just a consumer. And that's by implementing a school garden in every school throughout Pinellas County, so our children can understand the importance of producing exactly what they consume. And that will also let the parents understand, and give them the know-how to want to be involved in their children's education, because it is also, food is the basis of living. So why would you not want to be involved if it has something to do with how you're going to live your life?
Thank you very much for the question, and if you don't mind, I'll give you some examples of what we are doing right now for some of those struggling schools. Partnerships with the National Association for the Advancement of Color People have partnered with Melrose Elementary, going door-to-door to those parents who have not been participating in their children's education. I took a group of 63 teachers on a tour, and we actually went into the community, so that they can begin to understand some of the things those children deal with before they get on campus, and to forge those relationships. Because oftentimes, you hear and read that there is a sense of fear between the teachers in certain communities, and I want to break that. And I also want to give a caveat, I grew up in Jordan Park, and many of you have heard some of the things that have gone on in Jordan Park, and I pa, my family was not rich, I came from a working family, but we did not, not excel in education because I came from a poor community. So I just want to give that caveat and make sure we keep that at the forefront.
This is last question. I mean, I'll stay longer if you want, I don't have to go back to work, so.
My question is to all of you, being taught in a science class, yes or no? If your answer is yes, should the science teacher teach creationism?
Why don't we start inside and work out? I don't know where the mic is. Repeat the question again, because I could barely hear you.
Creationism being taught in a science class, yes or no? If your answer is yes, should the science teacher teach creationism?
I think creationism and evolution should be taught side by side. I don't care what classroom. If evolution's being taught in the science classroom, then creation should be taught by contrast. Absolutely. They should know the fa, every student should know the facts. Sadly, they're not getting that at home either. Should know the facts, draw their own conclusion.
I think we're going that way.
Yeah, we're going inside out, so.
No.
This'll be short? No. I couldn't hear that. No.
I've been teaching science for the last 20 years. Creationism is not science, and it should not be taught in a science course.
No.
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 No, it shouldn't be. Reading, writing, arithmetic, no.
So am I hearing votes, am I seeing votes to take another question?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Let's see. Right here.
Hello, I'm Cory Adler. I graduated from high school a really long time ago with some friends who were rock stars, and they wanted to be teachers. And now that we're all retiring, they didn't love it. And I'm concerned about younger people who may be rock stars, why in the world would they want to be a teacher in an environment that doesn't encourage them to be creative and out of the box, and put their students' learning in front of everything else? So what's the answer?
For anyone or all?
Sure, it'd be fun for everybody, I'd really love to hear it.
How about, let's start
them to be creative and out of the box and put their students' learning in front of everything else? So what's the answer?
For any one or all?
Sure, it'd be fun for everybody. I'd really love to hear.
How about, let's start this way, and then...
Thank you so much for that question, and I will tell you that one of the things that we've instituted is, A, to get out and start recruiting much earlier than we have been doing before, to make sure that those potential teachers understand the district that they're coming to, and that we're looking for people who want to make a change, who's willing to step outside of the box and understand that people learn in different manners, whether it is culturally, musically, hands-on, or some can understand just from reading that book. We also have a program that provides about two weeks of deep orientation, so that those new teachers that are coming on board can be able to learn how to marry what they've learned in the classroom versus what is reality, because they can be two very different things. I also think that those of us that are in the community, if we say that we love teaching, we love students, and we love our community, we've got to find a way to give at least one hour of our time to the teacher and to the student.
This goes back to engaging our students while they're young. So when they are young, they would have that propensity to want to grow up and be an educator and not just focus on living that rock star life, because education is a rock star life. And if we teach that in the classroom and indoctrinate that in them, that being an educator is the rock star lifestyle, then they'll grow up to want to be a teacher and to live that education rock star lifestyle and not to stay out at a party all night. But yes, we have to get them while they're young. Education seeps into our children before third grade, so that...
We have to look at what the school board can do and what the state is requiring as far as high stakes tests, a test on one day. I've been one board member that has been persistent. One thing I suggested when I looked at all the testing, especially in elementary school, a lot of it was district. And the board said, "Dr. Grego and staff, this summer, look at it and make many more, many less mandated by the district." I also have been talking about site-based decision-making, and I've been talking for a while, and I'm only one board member. It takes a little while. We need to encourage teachers to be creative, have more art, music, drama in their classes, projects. We've gotten away from that, and we need to do more of it, and encourage teachers to do it.
Two parties. For me, we need to make sure that we have the right people teaching in our classrooms. And I think that Dr. Grego, as well as Dr. Bill Law with St. Pete College, has a great program for that, to really get the teachers, the students at SBC, spending more time in the classroom, to really realize, is this what they want to do for their career? And secondly, I do think we do have a lot of mandates on our teachers, that they've lost the freedom to be able to teach and feel like facilitators. That is what I've heard from so many teachers on the campaign trail, is that they're leaving the profession because they've lost the ability to be creative and to teach the way that they want to teach, instead of this minute-by-minute, hour-by-hour approach to teaching, which that's not the way to teach our children. We need to test and make sure they're learning information, but let's let these teachers teach. They know their job.
You want to motivate younger people to teach, to become teachers, you need to do two things. You need to change the atmosphere in which they work in. Locally, I say two things. One is locally. Locally, right now, there's a lot of divisiveness. It's a very divisive atmosphere in our district. We need to start acting collaboratively together, create a better local working atmosphere. Honestly, the only thing that's gonna really motivate people and what's really gonna get rid of the negativity in the profession is to have a national outcry against the nationally mandated men in Tallahassee. Everybody's got a gun in Tallahassee. Washington's got a gun in Tallahassee. Tallahassee's got a gun to the districts. We need to remove those factors. That's the only thing that's gonna create a pleasant atmosphere that people are gonna want to work in.
I may lose this before I start, so I want to warn you. My mother was a teacher. My sister was a law professor at Stetson. So education is in my family. I'll tell you, as a teacher for many, many years, there was no bigger thrill when you see a student out there and the bulb goes off, okay? I've got it now. Because you never know if you're doing the right job until 10, 20 years later. It's not like building a house when you see the construction right there in front of you, okay? But this is about kids, okay? Bottom line. Are we doing the best we can for our kids? The answer is no. But if you have someone in your mind who would love to go into teaching, I'd be more than happy to talk to them and hopefully convince them this is one of the best professions in the world.
Being in the classroom from a different perspective, years ago when I taught, and I heard somebody mention that, you know, we teach outside of the box. Why are we in the box in the first place? There is no box. Allow the creativity, give the autonomy back to the classroom teacher. We do not have that control. The excitement comes from when you have that creative moment with your children in the classroom. If you're reading a script and mandated minute by minute, you don't get to do that. And teachers are walking away. I was going to teach another year. I walked away. And I love teaching, and I love turning that light bulb on the kids. And I felt this is the better channel to make that difference for those kids, because we're losing good teachers, and most of all, we're losing good students. Thank you.
Well, the last 15 years of high-stakes teaching, high-stakes testing, and the outcomes, I think, has really created a siege mentality in public education, which has trickled into the classroom and made the classroom not the kind of place that it ought to be for good teachers. Teaching is not a science. Teaching is an art. Children are not vessels that we fill with knowledge. They're instruments that we teach how to play, in a sense, right? We need to bring that approach back to the classroom. That is the light bulb going off. That is what good teachers do. But we need to celebrate our teachers, and we need to create policies in our school board that buffers those teachers from those bad decisions coming down from Washington, D.C., and Tallahassee, and allow them to be creative educators, to teach our students, to teach our kids, not just to test them. That's where we get our very best outcomes. And I've heard from many teachers too. I'm sorry.
Again, this is, to me, a huge leadership piece. Back being a principal, there were always tough mandates that came down. Not as tough as it is right now, and I promise you that. But we'd get together as a staff and problem-solve. And we'd get together with our families and problem-solve. And that's what it takes. I mean, it just, it takes how we can do this the best way that we're still meeting the mandate, but we're still meeting our students' needs. And becoming a family, they know you're supportive, and they know that you're there for them to help make them stronger, not knock them down.
We are where we're at because of a lack of leadership. There's no ands, ifs, or buts about that. Our school boards, our schools, they fell down years ago, and parents were disenfranchised, upset, and furious. They couldn't get anything done at the local level, and they punted it all the way up to the federal level, including the state. We need to get back local control, and we can only get that back if we have your trust. In order to have your trust, we need to lead. I want to lead. I don't want to follow.
Thank you, and I'd stay another hour to answer more questions, but actually, to have them answer the questions. But our time is, we've already run overtime, so.
They have one minute closing.
Oh, okay. Well, I was gonna cut it out. Let's start inside again and close. One minute.
Oh, we are really, we really went over on time.
Yeah, Chandra.
You guys okay? We went over on time.
Way to go, Chandra.
You're the one that cut last and gave last question. We're gonna be like 11 minutes over, so we're gonna have for them to do their closings. Okay. Well, do you want to start on the inside? Maybe you might need to come closer in if it doesn't... There. Sorry, we'll make you quick.
Again, thank you Tiger Bay Club for having this event. Maureen Ahern, running for school board District Six. Deciding on who you vote for for school board is a serious matter. I believe it is one of the most important governing bodies there is. The school board is in charge of providing a public education to our children, and that public education is in charge of shaping the minds of our future. If elected, I would take this job very seriously. As I've mentioned, my background is in journalism, asking the tough questions and digging for the answers and solutions to problems. A lot of people say that government shouldn't be run like a business, and I agree, it shouldn't be run like a business. But the public education system is in the business of educating our youth, and it has to do a better job at that. That return on investment is that each and every child receives a diploma. This is my first run for office, and if elected, I would roll up my sleeves and get to work, researching policy as I've been doing already, finding the best practices and solutions, listening to teachers, students, and parents, and I humbly ask for your vote on August 26th. Thank you.
I believe a strong public education system is the greatest protector of our democracy. It has been a real privilege to serve these many years. We have a good district that needs to do better, especially with our most struggling students. I had two sons that went through Pinellas County Schools, and they were well-prepared for college and good job supporting themselves. I believe we have a good board, a good superintendent, celebrating successes but focusing on improvements.
Okay. Go to the mic. I'll close with a quote from Abraham Lincoln. "The philosophy in the schoolhouse in one generation is the philosophy of the government in the next. It only takes one generation to make a change." And I believe that change needs to start here and now. We already have a generation of lost individuals, so what does that say about our government as a whole? Change is necessary. Change is not always something that we should be afraid of. I am the new kid on the block, yet new is good. I think so. So please, on November 4th, go out and vote for Irene Olive Cates, the new kid on the block. Thank you. Write my name in. I'm right in. Thank you.
Well, thank you so very much for staying and for all of the questions that you've asked. Yes, on November 4th, you will see my name, Renee Flowers, and you will see a little bubble, and I need you to bubble me in and return me to your Pinellas County School Board, proudly representing District Seven. I want to clarify something. My opponent gave many of you the impression that we are socially promoting children, and that is not what I said. What I said was, during the summer, summer bridge, as a result of those third graders being able to attend and taking a pre-test and a post-test, they have been able to meet the standard, and we've been able to promote them onto the fourth grade, as they should be. I want to let you know that our graduation rate trend is moving forward. We're at a 71.89% graduation rate. We have an AP, which is the Advanced Placement Test rate that's moving forward. African-American children make up 21.2% of that. Our SAT composites for African-American children, 439.49, and our Cates Certification graduates, 4,096. We are moving in the right direction. You know Renee Flowers, November 4th.
Again, I'm Kent Paluso, District Four. In closing today, I just want to say one thing. I really only have one primary vision for our district. I want every thought, word, and action be solely and directly focused on the kids, on preparing our children for the future. We need to act collaboratively as a board, as a district, with our community and our community partners and our families. I've been endorsed in this race by the Pinellas Classroom Teachers, the Pinellas Realtors, and recommended by the St. Pete Times, Tampa Bay Times, sorry. And I ask for your vote in District Four for Kent Paluso. Thank you.
Thank you again for allowing this opportunity today. A couple of things I'd like to quickly cover. I mentioned earlier about you're paying the taxes. Well, I don't know how many of you know how much you're paying each school board member to be a school board member. It's just under $42,000 a year, for a grand total of just under $300,000 a year for the whole board. It takes a school teacher 12 years to make as much as a school board member. I find that ridiculous, and that should be cut drastically. Tomorrow, the teachers come back, and one of the issues that's never hardly talked about is morale. And it's a very easy issue to talk about and just say, "Well, the morale is bad." Well, John, how do you know that? Well, there's two climate surveys that this county puts out. One is on the website, which is just numbers and percentages, which for me is very easy to read. But there's another one that's not on any website. It's not Googled, okay? It's about the comments that teachers and staff members make. There's just a few pages of the comments. So if you don't believe me about the morale, get a copy of this. Thank you. Whoops.
Our most important goal is to have successful students, but we also have to have... Whoop. Oh, thank you. We also need to have teachers that are respected and feel that they are able to do their jobs. Cookie cutter teaching doesn't work. I've taught the Common Core. It doesn't work the way it's being implemented. We're not getting enough, and there are gonna have some retraining this year, but last year, they came out, two weeks to prepare for the Common Core, a whole new curriculum, and you think your kids were ready to take the test at the end of the year. No way. I have a strong business background. I have the leadership skills. I did an excellent job in the city community, in the city of Tarpon Springs, and as a teacher, I know what's going on. I hear the frustrations. I walked it. I talked it. Please vote August 26th. Thank you.
Kent Curtis, parent, educator, active volunteer in Pinellas County School System. I have been on the campaign trail for a number of weeks now. I've met all of our sitting board members. They are very good people. They are very hard-working public servants. But eight years ago, the five schools that are failing today were not failing, two Bs and A and two Cs. Four years ago, only two of those schools were failing. Today, all five of those schools are failing. Yes, we're doing a lot of things right in the school system. My kids are in public school. They're getting a great education. There's no question about it. But if we are going to ensure that every child gets an excellent education, we cannot ignore the places where we're not doing well, and we need to address those right away. I've been working in those schools for the last five years as an active volunteer. My kids left those schools and moved on to middle schools. I stayed in those schools and continued to work with those kids day after day, recruiting volunteers and working with thousands of schoolchildren. I know these kids. I know their parents and guardians. I know that community, and I have a plan to turn it around. Kent Curtis, vote for me now by mail if you have your mail ballot, or on August 26th. Thank you very much.
I do want to continue representing you on our school board. I have always been a very good listener, been responsive. There's never been a phone call or email that I haven't answered. We've got our Teachers Association back there. I'm thrilled that they had their endorsement, and the Realtors, and the Tampa Bay Times as well. But that's insignificant. It's really your endorsement that I want. I've been in this family, been in Pinellas County for 60 years. My dad is Lee Benjamin, who was an educator. My mother was an educator. Three sisters in education. We're very, very passionate, and that's not gonna change. Please vote Terry Crasner, Countywide, District Two.
I'm last again. Imagine that. My name's Chris Talnitz. I'm running for school board because I believe we have a good school district, but I want to make it great. I have a passion for education. If you read my literature, I have a breadth of educational experiences, both...
If you read my literature, I have a breadth of educational experiences, both here in Pinellas County, having grown up in Pinellas County and lived here for over 30 years, but also been educated over in Germany, spent some time in the service. I have a wife who is a school teacher and two young kids, so I have a 13-year investment in Pinellas County coming up. It hasn't come due yet. He's going into kindergarten this year. So I want to make this district great, and I think I'm the person to be on the school board to represent us countywide. Chris Talpnetz, vote August 26th, and thank you for having us out tonight.
Okay, before I announce the winner of the Tiger, there are mugs for each of the speakers, and I know you all have seen them, but I like this. Carburet politician for lunch, so thank you for today. And there will be some pictures if you'll stay around just a couple minutes when we're done. Okay, Wednesday, August 27th, District 65 and 67, Florida House candidates will be here at the St. Pete Yacht Club. At the Yacht Club this time. On Friday, September 5th, District 66, 68, and 69, Florida House candidates at the Yacht Club. Thursday, September 18th, District Two and Four, county commissions at the Yacht Club. And now, what everyone's been waiting for, for the question, "Creationism in science class, yes or no?" Pam Shoshon. I don't want to leave. I'm having fun. We are adjourned.
You've been listening to the luncheon presentations of all of the school board candidates, or most of the school board candidates here in Pinellas County at...